Welcome to the Financial General Purposes Meeting. This is a meeting that was postponed a couple of weeks ago because of four eight problems. If I start with apologies?
We have apologies from councillor Ara, who has a work commitment, councillor Crittenden and other commitments, councillor Young, who's unwell, councillor Linda Piper and Stuart Piper, who have a personal commitment, and councillor Alban, who has a family commitment.
Thank you. Any others? No? Declarations of interest. Do any councillors have any interest they need to declare? No? Thank you. Next item then is item three, minutes. To approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Finance General Purposes Committee held on the 13th of June. Can I have a proposal? To record? You seconding?
Yep.
No, thank you. Thank you. All those in agreement? Item then is item four, Finance and Budget. Item 4.1, to receive a written report from Miss E. Richard, Deputy Town Clerk, detailing budget expenditure for April to August 2022. Anybody wish to raise anything on this item?
No.
No? Can I propose then that we accept the report? All those in favour? Thank you. Then item 4.2, to receive a written report from Miss E. Richard, Deputy Town Clerk and Finance Officer, to provide an update on the business rates for Bradford House. Do you want to say something on that?
Thank you. Business rates for Bradford House caught up with us and we received a rates bill for over three years from TDC totaling £57,344. It was previously resolved by the council that we would look into getting a rates rebate for part of the building in order to bring this debt down for floors one and two, which are not in use. However, we requested a revaluation of the property, which TDC organised, and the valuation office has considerably reduced the valuation of the building and the total due is now £6,000, £5,067. Members are asked to consider, would you still like to go for a rate rebate on that amount for floors one and two? Or actually accept that payment and it would allow floors one and two to be considered for meanwhile uses?
If it's up to this point, up to meanwhile use point, then I'd like a rebate as much as we could get. When it's meanwhile used, then of course we can legitimately pay for it if we use those floors. But up until this point, I have no reason why we would be paying for something, especially with all the things we've done TDC. And I propose that.
Can I just ask how fit the first and second floors are now for meanwhile use? Are they safe and amenable to use? Or is there still a lot of work planned? But I mean, in terms of temporary accommodation for?
It'll depend what they're for. Storage?
Yep.
Be easy. There's a storage for community groups.
Yep.
I think you would not necessarily look at having a capacity of hundreds of people up and down. But there's, yes, I think there is some options available.
I think for meanwhile use, everything has to be health and safety compliant anyway. And so therefore, nothing would be suggested on those two floors unless it was.
Unless it was, yes. I'm just wondering what the likely uptake, if you will, what kinds of things?
And secondly, part of the meanwhile use budget hopefully would be a coordinator that would be doing all of that type of stuff too, which would be collecting data. And they would therefore suggest possible uses for that. So to allay your fears, they will be. Just meaning if it wasn't, we wouldn't be using them.
Yeah, of course. Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
I think sort of closed meetings might be possible.
Yes.
As public meetings.
As public meetings can be suitable. Yeah, get it. Thank you.
Councillors will remember also that having a second ratable building also triggered the situation with this building, that we can no longer claim, was it small business relief?
Yeah.
So in the medium to long term, need to consider what we can do about that.
Hence the rebate.
So we have a proposal.
I'll second it.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Any others in favour? Thank you. Item five, Policies and Procedures. Number of policies and procedures that the town clerk is treating us to. First one is Staffing Handbook, contents of which is prescribed by Worknest, the council's external HR provider.
Can I just ask, was there not a Staffing Handbook before? No. That was a bit of a silly question.
Would you want to say anything about it?
No, I think this is an omission in our current policies and procedures. And we need to have this in place. The next step down the line will be also updating contracts. The Staffing Handbook is very thorough. I think over the years in HR, things that were previously split across 10, 20 policies now tend to get grouped together. So there's a lot in here. There's been some tweaks with regard to authority and permission seeking. But by and large, it's exactly as prescribed by our HR provider, who we do pay for legal advice. And also part of the contract with them is if we do things in their prescribed way, they also cover the legal expenses. So it's advisable to stick to how they prescribe things.
I propose that we accept this as our Staffing Handbook.
Yeah, it looks very thorough.
It's really tough, yeah.
All those in favour?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item then is CCTV policy. Town Clerk.
This is another must do that we don't have. We don't have. So it's currently covering the CCTV at Charlotte Court and Bradford House. When we have our CCTV installed at the allotment sites, this will also need to be added into this policy.
Anybody want to raise anything? I propose that we accept this CCTV policy. Seconded. All those in favour? 5.3, Safeguarding Policy. Town Clerk.
Another new policy, which is a must do. We do have vulnerable people, members of staff, due to different reasons. And it's essential to have such a policy.
Yep.
An observation and a question. There's a few little sort of grammatical twiddles that need to be happened in this, needless to say. That's the thing that I put in on. So you've got something that says an individual had or things like that. But I'm quite happy to highlight those and send them through. They make no difference to the sense. It's purely about the grammar. What I wanted to ask was about safeguarding training for staff and for councillors and DBS checks, because many of us in our roles end up certainly working with quite closely with vulnerable adults of one sort or another. And whether we are thinking in terms of ensuring that both our staff and our members have access to the training?
So at the moment, the staff have an online training. Because actually, there's not many circumstances where the staff.
Where they might, yes.
But I'm aware that that safeguarding for councillors and equality's training.
Yeah, don't do it. And when you think of the extent to which we are.
Can I, along those lines then, one of the things we spoke about long time ago, and I'm sure you're on it, was monitoring, sorry, auditing, basically what people, you know, do have, et cetera, et cetera. You know, so for example, who's done what safeguarding training or whatever.
Who's got a DBS check.
You know, because our professional qualifications and jobs might allow for it. And I, across the staff, obviously that goes without saying, but it would be quite interesting to do for councillors as well, I would have thought. Because then you also know who you can call on for certain things.
Sounds audacious.
Exactly, exactly that.
Yeah, along those lines. The online training that they're doing is that NHS grades up on their trainings, obviously from somebody that's, you know, doing reception or somebody that's clinical contract. Where is the training based? That they're, the content of the course, if they're going online? Again, it's, our online training package is provided by Worknest. And it's, I'd say it's an introduction overview for staff who are not working with.
Corrective work, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fair enough, yes. And how long does it take? Is it one of those ones, I have to keep going back until they actually pass it?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yes. I did do one for this, for this.
Yes.
This policy seems to be directed at the way we deal with the public. That is more than anything else. But in terms of safeguarding our staff, will that come under a deal?
Yes. So this also covers our vulnerable staff. For example, we have a miner working with us. She is covered by this as well. But then you also will have risk assessments, internal specific risk assessments relating to any vulnerable people within the staff or particular sorts of activities.
So something like how we look after people that are responsible for, say, when the chain goes out in the public?
Yeah.
That would be covered by risk.
A risk assessment, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? I propose that we accept this safeguarding policy. All those in favour? Thank you.
This is definitely a legal requirement as well, yes. Which is updating it.
Next one then is four, 5.4, Financial Risk Register. Approved by the council in May 2022. Subject to review by the FA. Must change.
In order to complete our year-end accounts, it was essential to have a financial risk register, which we hadn't had before. So there was one that was put in place, which I believe is still current and good and appropriate. But at the time, it was resolved to bring the document to this committee for consideration.
Yes.
We've got a Guild Hall in there on the first. Change. That it looks excellent.
Asset acquisition.
Yes, we splendid.
Sandwich Town Council, thanks, thank you.
Bit of a giveaway where it came from. Does it just, it's in your mind?
I tend to think, I've written these things once.
Too right, Ollie.
Both we accept the Financial Risk Register? All those in favour? 5.5, Use of Personal Portable Applications Policy.
Yes, about that.
This was actually something that was flagged up in a fire risk assessment that was undertaken for this building. And we also had a fire risk assessment freshly undertaken for Bradford House. And it was something that was flagged up that we needed for here. Chris has written this with that risk assessment in mind. When it was first issued with the agenda a few weeks ago, it was very focused towards the staff. And councillor Crittenden flagged up that actually, is it something for staff, is it something for councillors? And so actually, I have updated the wording. So it's basically any user of this building, hirers, councillors, from a fire risk assessment point of view, we've got to be mindful of what people are, what electrical devices are coming into the building and being plugged in.
So am I right in thinking that this is something that people would sign if they were hiring the space?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I tell you, various of us have been in the habit of coming in and plugging in a laptop, et cetera. So yes, it's something we need to be mindful of, isn't it?
I think the recommendation is that it's not to rule it out completely, but you've got to be using the original charges for the device.
I just, the reason I loved the beginning, the irony of this, just so you know, is my council laptop, you know, is not personal, yeah, almost set itself on fire in my house. So, you know, it's quite interesting. Mine, mine was absolutely fine, you know.
Is this something that they're putting in place now? Because I mean, it's been pretty much every day that people go to work and plug their thing. You know, it's certainly immunization for everybody. It's like bringing in development and social care. So this is the kind of new, it's a development work that we need to be mindful of. In terms of fire risk, it's fair enough, isn't it? Think about it.
Yep.
Such an requirement for the insurance, for building insurance.
Now we've had a, sorry, check. Now we've had a professionally undertaken fire risk assessment saying that we need to do this. Then I think there would be an insurance risk if we didn't.
Yeah, of course. Suppose we accept it?
Seconded. All those in favour? Thank you. Move on to Own Working Policy.
Again, a necessary policy, which at the moment is written with the staff in mind. But I did have it in my mind that we also need to consider operations of the councillors. Something new. The specifics again of how things will work in different circumstances will be covered by risk assessments. But this is the overall, the overarching policy.
Any comment, question? Propose we adopt the policy? Seconded. All those in favour? Thank you. We're getting there. One more?
Very strong, love it.
5.7 is to consider a recommendation from the Climate Change Working Group that the following additions be made to our grant application forms. Forms, only one form now, aren't there? Do your organisation's activities seek to make a positive impact on the environment by reducing greenhouse gas emissions and/or increasing biodiversity? For example, reducing your energy usage, reducing the use of plastics, especially single-use plastics, giving priority to using local suppliers or recycling any waste that you generate? If yes, please give examples. If no, tell us why. The Climate Change Working Group discussed this at Lent and we didn't want to be heavily on people applying for our grants. But we felt this was perhaps a minimum that we could do just to raise the subject with them. Any comments?
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad we are asking people. Because again, it's making people aware that we're conscious of it and we'd like other people to be too.
Yeah, it's the awareness, it's just every time, it's going to flag it up every time.
It's always there in the same way, yeah.
Yep. Is that acceptable then? I propose that we adopt that proposal.
Yep, seconded.
All those in favour? Thank you. That completes item five. Item six is Strategic Objectives and Communications. 5.1 is to receive a report from the town clerk regarding strategic objectives for 2023 to 2027.
So it's customary, sorry. So it's customary for a council to have an overarching plan. That'll stretch a number of years. The current document was pulled together around a year ago and it was, to help myself understand at the time, all the different things that were going on. It might seem, members might not be expecting to think about this now with the May election coming up. But actually, it was a recommendation of the consultant we used for the staffing review that he recommended, don't think about the election. Actually, your current plan's coming to an end. This council needs to think about the next four years. Which obviously the next council could change things. But it's not a reason not to actually be thinking about the plan now. And so I'm asking members to think about how they would like to tackle that.
When I became chair, the first question I asked was, what's the council doing? What projects have we got? Where are we in them? Who do I contact with regards to them? What are our monies put aside for them? I had none of that information at hand and it was very peaceful what was given to me. And I tried to draw up a list of like what we were doing. That was quite difficult, again, when the person who's meant to be looking back at things and being agreed wasn't particularly forthcoming. So Laura's done an amazing job, thank you, Town Clerk, with regards to looking at literally what has been noted on in the past, what we've, you know, sort of like come up and what we've committed ourselves to, along with talking about where we are and so forth and doing exactly that. It's like, who is in control of this? You know, where is the money's from? Who do we contact? And really making it user-friendly. Because how can you, you know, steer the ship if you don't have a chart, as it were? So it's vitally important in my eyes that we would do this. Because the next council, whoever takes it on board, especially whoever leads the council, needs this. They can't suddenly make it up on the hoof when they get there. So this excites me more than anything at the moment because this is exactly what I wanted. You know, when I became chair, it was very difficult to manage without anything like it. So thank you.
Councillor Austin.
I assume from what you said that the tradition being that no administration can bind the hands of its successor. If a new council came in with a totally different view, they could take that as a basis, change it. So we're not committing anybody to anything now. We're just formalizing what we're doing and how we see it. And then that's a basis for the new council to work from. Great, thank you.
It's a pity that the Chair of Council isn't here to give his view. I mean, I agree, the document that's been produced is a real step forward. Do councillors want another chance to look at it and bring it to a full council?
Chair, yeah, it should be brought to full council for approval.
Yeah.
Acceptable. I'll propose that then. Seconded. Anybody else, any other comments? All those in favour then? I ask you all to read it in detail for the full council. Item 6.2, to consider a report from the town clerk telling the steps required to create a communication strategy. The committee is asked to approve this project. Yeah, go ahead.
The steps set out here were as per training that I undertook a couple of years ago. And touch wood, I've managed to, Dean has recently undertaken training with the same people. So, which again, prescribed this process. And there's some work that recently left Dean's desk. So I think we're at a good point for him to have some capacity for this body of work with me. And I think it's something that requires a lot of legwork to set up. It's not an easy undertaking. But I think very valuable for really promoting what the council does and why.
Yes, I agree.
Well, we have accumulated over the years some communication tools that we use that, you know, some are used very effectively, I think. But to formalize it in this way would probably be to everybody's advantage.
I'd really like to, especially I suppose with the social media side of things and the communication with the public, be of assistance or be brief if I can, just to know what's going on, all good ideas, without wanting to tread on anybody's toes. Because I think it's one of the things that I find that we're almost missing a trick on in lots of ways. But we're getting a lot of things, you know, together and right. So I'm not too worried about that. But I do know that we could almost move forward quite quickly in certain areas on this with a few tweaks. So if I can be of assistance, I'd like to, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to ask the town clerk, did you envisage this to be an officer process or would you like member involvement?
I think member involvement is essential because I think sometimes when you're the person that's doing that's doing something, you can actually lose sight. And so actually, it's really essential for members and also to engage with the public to be able to say, what do you know about Roundus Gate Town Council? What do you think we do? Because that will inform, right, well, these are the messages, these are the areas where we're failing.
And if I could give people an example, there's a couple of people I follow on Twitter. One is Doncaster City Council, if anybody does. They've got the best, you ought to, they've got the best communications team. They're, you want to say young and witty, but actually, they're really informative, very, very gentle in what they put things across. But, you know, they really do hit the mark every single time. They can take the mickey out themselves, but they're all really informative. And when serious matters come up, you know, that comes across with feeling and so on and so forth. So it's nice to see what other examples there are out there. And there are several I follow with regards to social media. But the other thing too, of course, at Bradford House, in my mind, you know, I would love to see us being able to promote that in more for social media starts with regards to Instagram photographs, you know, the process I wanted to sort of like, you know, shout about the fact that, you know, we'd have the best day with the architects and how exciting this is. And, you know, just to see what other involvement we can get across. Hence the wanting to sort of like be involved. If anybody does have any other ideas, by all means, give them, to lead rather than just on loads to town clerk at all times. That's why I want to be involved.
Who does, sorry. Who does our Facebook posts at the moment? There's quite a lot. This week, the Roundus Gate Town Council has done missions have. Is it Chris?
No, it might be Dean or Octavia.
Right. They've got detailed knowledge of the fact that we did bets.
Oh, right. So that's, the technicians feed that through to the office, who then compile it into regular updates.
No, that's good.
Tricia.
I was just going to say that I had noticed there were a lot more posts, particularly on Twitter, recently. It's certainly, it's, there's been a higher profile of those, to my knowledge. And that's good to see.
The tone of voice that we'd like to make slightly more broken as well.
I was just going to say exactly the same thing, only about Facebook and what Council and Parkinson highlighted there. Because actually, it gets very positive for some of the postings that we're seeing about town council.
Yes, and the photographs, the before and after.
Yeah, it really does.
Very positive, yeah.
Do thank them as well, won't you? Because it does make a difference.
Yeah.
There's a proposal at the bottom of page two. Do you want to read it?
Oh, yes. So members are asked to agree to undertake the process that's detailed within this report.
Yes.
The three steps that you propose could be built in there some cooperation, consultation with a group of interested members. And then people like councillor Nixie can share their research. I mean, I doubt everybody will want to be, but somewhere. Councillor Ovenden has his dapper with social media initiative.
Yes, yes, lots of expertise.
Exactly. And that's also extremely positive, Tony, everything you've been posting.
Yes, brilliant.
Very formidable.
Yeah. Six three.
Six three, what's six three?
Communications policy.
Communications policy. Town clerk.
Again, a new policy. And this is not so much for officers, but for members. And I think actually, in advance of the elections and further when we get to it, just it sets out some do's and don'ts on what councillors should be doing.
Yeah, very wise. Some of us are full of the towel of this occasionally. Any comments? I guess it's to warn us that we may be told that we can't do something. That we might want to.
And it's not about members sharing personal opinions, but it's making clear that you're not doing it on behalf of the opinion. You're not talking on behalf of the council.
Yeah, I've just had a complaint about somebody from our Green Party branch making a comment on social media. As far as I'm concerned, that person is free to make whatever comment they like on social media. They're not speaking on behalf of, and that's what we're going to say. And it's the same thing, isn't it? It's making clear, this is a person in their personal life or their personal view. And this is the view of the council, the view of the group.
Any other comments on this policy?
It is very helpful, that is clear and clear. Reading through that, it would have made me think.
Thank you, town clerk, for thinking of us. All those in favour?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.